Sorry, to sign this agreement, can I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Excellent. All right. So that's great. So we will sign that agreement and we will have a mutual aid agreement with West Point on the books officially. Okay, so the next order of business is to start talking about spring and summer planning for the village. Again, as way of background, I've often wondered why there wasn't an actual calendar of events for the village. Even my toddler's preschool has a calendar of events, so I figure we should probably do. The idea here is for us to work with all interested parties with organizations that do events in the village so that we know what to expect, we know where to put our resources, and we know how to plan accordingly. That includes everything from not being surprised when there's 400 people coming down the street from a boat on C Street to a parade, to any other events that we want everyone to enjoy safely and with the knowledge of the fire company, the police department, and all the resources that the village has. So trustees Fatty and Starbuck have been working on that and been reaching out to all the organizations. And so with that, I'll pass it along to trustee Starbuck to give us a little bit more information on that.
Okay. Thank you, Tweeps. And I will make also the point that the Village of Cold Spring is not looking to organize these events per se. We are setting up a framework for other organizations within the village to cross organize together. And we would like to be sort of the conduit. So we want to put these dates on the calendar, so if an organization is planning something in spring, they might want it to correspond with an event that is a village-wide celebration, to make it sort of a bigger community event. So with that said, I want to sort of start with public service operation dates. Generally, every year, the Main Street restrooms and visitor center open mid-April. And the bathrooms last year were opened, I believe, on April 15th. There was a period of time when it was four days a week, and then it switched to seven days a week. I would like to propose that we set a calendar date so that annually we know that it always opens at this time of the year and closes. And generally, we close it at December 31st or December 30th, because at that point, the pipes will freeze and the building is not winterized. So this year, holidays. When spring break, spring recess starts on April, the week of April 10th. I would like to set a date on the calendar, if possible, to get the bathrooms opened the weekend before, so that when the public is out of school and families are walking around, the bathrooms are open for people. So that would probably be around, you know, the 7th or so, let's see, April 8th would be the Saturday or the Friday, I think, and then April 10th would be the Sunday. So that would be something that we would probably need to communicate with the highway department once they're sort of looking at their spring planning. Then, and I would also propose that we just open it seven days a week, because once visitor season starts, we have people pretty much all the time. Then, I also mentioned the Mayor's Park public restrooms don't tend to be open except for during planned events. So that's just something for the general public to know. We don't currently have enough security cameras down there to open it more. But that's something we may consider in the future. And then the visitor center with the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce tends to open around May 28th for Memorial Day weekend, and they tend to open Saturdays and Sundays and holiday Mondays. And have, you know, people down at the visitor center helping guide our visitors. So that's, those are generals, a start for framework in terms of visitor traffic. Community dates that are up for consideration. Historically, there are about four parades that have happened. They don't happen, they haven't happened every year, and it's definitely the past couple of years COVID has put some of them off, but usually the American Legion and the VFW Hall groups have a parade at Memorial Day on May 30th, and that tends to be something where they visit the cemeteries in the area and the monuments. And then, the village in the past has organized an Independence Day parade for July 4th, and last year, that did not happen, and it was kind of moved to Community Day in terms of the fireworks. So that's something for us to consider. I don't think that the village is looking to organize a parade, but if there was a group that was interested in doing so, we could leave that date open. And then the Chamber of Commerce organizes a Halloween parade annually on Saturday, October 30th with a rain date on Sunday. So we can keep that one set. That's something the community always enjoys. And then last parade is Veterans Day, and again, the American Legion tends to celebrate that at the Veterans Memorial on Main Street by, on St. Mary's Lawn. There are several community events that we should consider to put on the calendar. Friday, April 22nd is a date that would be Incorporation Day and also its Earth Day. So that could be something, and I've heard that the Climate Smart Coordinator is interested in participating in some things with that, and possibly our tree committee. The tree committee always plants and has an educational sort of ceremony on Arbor Day, which is April 30th. And they have to do it on Arbor Day because it's, it's a commitment that you have to keep to keep your Tree City certification. So they will still be planting a tree on Arbor Day, so I'm going to put that on the calendar and add that to my list of dates. But Incorporation Day is something that we've done in the past, and, you know, historically, it's the date that the village was officially created. So that's something to consider, and we'd be open to any number of groups who might be interested in creating some kind of celebration around that date. And then Saturday, June 25th, I was told is the date that the Film Society, Cold Spring Film Society, starts and launches their Saturdays. They have screenings down at Dockside Park every other Saturday from the 25th of June until the end of August. And I'm not sure they have their dates set yet, but that'll be coming soon. So that's something that belongs on the calendar, because that's the public parks being blocked out for a particular use. And then Saturday, September 3rd, Labor Day weekend is what we've sort of turned into Community Day, at least last year. I think that was pretty well received, and the community really enjoyed it, and I hope that we can go forward with that. We will be, again, looking for groups in the community to help organize that. And then last is Cold Spring aglow. Friday, December 9th is the date that the chamber has set and requested to put on the calendar. And usually, we have the bandstand, tree lighting, and the Santa visit, which I believe involves the rec department and also the fire company. So we were hoping that we could correspond those two events, so that if Friday, December 9th is Cold Spring aglow, maybe Saturday, December 10th is the Santa event, but we can then make it a weekend sort of celebration of the holidays to kick off that. So those are pretty much all of the dates. The only other thing to consider, and this is really up for reconsideration and renegotiation, it's not set, just to make sure that all the people on the call know that C Street is something that is negotiated every year, and whether or not they come is really, you know, up to whether the board feels it's appropriate and it is a benefit in some way to the village. So historically, they've come Saturdays and Sundays between October 1st and November 15th. Last year, they came Fridays as well. And last year, it was limited to 200 people on Fridays and 400 people on Saturdays and Sundays. That seemed to really work. In the past, there have been 800 people coming in on boats, and that was a lot. And we've gotten some feedback from merchants and businesses that 800 people floods the village, and there aren't enough services to make everybody happy. So limiting the number of people would be something that we would probably want to consider if we are looking to renegotiate. Last year, C Street also provided four porta potties, and they did that in the past two years of service. There have been mixed reviews on whether or not they get used, and if the expense of it is worth making C Street pay for it. And then, it's, it's very key to note that the visitor votes that come in, the fees that we earn from them has been really beneficial to the village. So I know that a lot of people don't always enjoy having the votes in their view or huge amounts of people here, but it also should be, you know, counterweighted with the value of the revenue that it brings to the village. So that's, that's pretty much it. I would love to hear from the board on if there are any dates that I missed, or if your thoughts on, on C Street in terms of what would be acceptable or what would not be acceptable terms for us to go forward with. Matt Prentice from the Chamber of Commerce has offered to set up a meeting to talk about the terms, if, if there is possibility of them, their interests coming back this year.
I have a couple of questions. The restroom dates, are those typically driven by weather, traffic, budget? Like, where do those dates come from? It seems that tourism is becoming more of an all-year-round thing. And I'm just curious what, there was something, obviously, last year in the paper with money and restrooms, and it got kind of crazy. But I'm just curious as to what's the methodology that goes into those dates? Is it all of the above, or is it one of the other, or?
From my understanding, mostly it's weather. As soon as we know that it's not going to snow again and the pipes won't freeze, that's when it seems okay to reopen the bathrooms. Before, you know, before April, there's still a chance of March being a deep freeze month. So usually, it's, it's more reliant on that. But Jeff, do you have any other insights on that?
Yeah, it's, it's weather and traffic. Historically, January, February, and through St. Patrick's Day tends to be quieter with tourism, though that's changed a little bit with, since COVID. But it's, it's, it's the need really doesn't arise until, arise until spring gets here and it gets nicer, and we get more foot traffic in the village.
Right.
And as far as the dates, the parades, the events, et cetera, is there a process that starts? So for instance, does anyone who's hosting an event, parade, whatever, have a form they fill out that has all the necessary information that then gets signed off by the necessary village departments, like your police, your fire? And then that all goes into one thing that then gets subject to an approval, so that it's consistent across the board? I know some things have events, like the rec department has a very extensive application system, but I'm just wondering if it's a consistent thing village-wide? Just so that it can be systemically kept track of, so we don't have issues like we did with the aglow last year?
There is not, there's not a parade permit or application. Typically, the American Legion for Memorial Day would just let us know what it's going to be. We make the arrangements with the police department. Obviously, the fire department knows about it because they participate in, in it every year, so. And same with Halloween. Someone from the chamber typically will let us put in an application, really more for the use of the bandstands, the area for after the parade. So those, those are the two that we get notified of, and that's how we do it. But there's no parade permit that the village has.
Okay. And then, obviously, the board approves everything that happens. Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. And then the Film Society dates. I would assume that Dockside's going to be under significant construction this summer, so that probably should be a conversation. And I think they were coming to one of the board meetings pretty soon, the State DEC people.
Yes.
It'd be a good idea to invite the film people to come, so they can hear exactly what everything is, so there's no surprises there as well.
Yeah, the Film Society was doing it based on the original timeline provided by Parks and the DEC had them completing it in June. That obviously is not going to happen, so.
Right. Okay.
Someone needs to talk to them about it.
But I think institutionalizing everything into one place where you can actually see everything for many reasons is a good idea.
Agreed.
And it might be worth talking to the rec department with the Film Society about the possibility of moving it to, like, Mayor's Park, potentially for this summer because of the construction happening at Dockside.
Yeah, that's not crazy.
Yeah. The only issue with that might be electricity at Mayor's Park.
Right.
On the field.
Okay.
I don't have an opinion on C Street at this point. I'd like to hear what people have to say about the C Street thing. I know it's got pluses and minuses.
Yeah, if we don't have any other comments, could we ask for a public comment at this point on this, or any, any input from the public?
Well, there's two ways we can do it. Yes, we can do, we can absolutely do that. We don't have a contract yet, or we don't have a proposal. And so I think from previous experience last year, it seemed very haphazard. We got it and had to turn it around very quickly, because they just apparently had made the decision and told us. Obviously, we want to avoid that. We want to make sure that we know well in advance the terms of the contract and, and money is involved. So I think it's probably a better idea to wait until we, until we have our first communications with them, and also working with the chamber, so that we can make sure that we negotiate the best deal that we can get. And then the public will obviously have the opportunity to, to speak on, on the details of the proposal and, and whether this is something that we should move forward with. That would be my suggestion.
That sounds fine.
But we're happy, obviously, if people have comments that, that are burning inside that you need to get out, we obviously want to hear them about C Street, but we don't have, we're, we would only be responding to what happened last year, and I think we need to take a fresh look at how we, how we process their request to use our, to use our village.
Right. Does any representatives from the chamber have any comments on the dates or on the events that pertain to them? See any hands up? And/or the rec department? Maybe Jeff could answer our question about. Are you there, Jeff Amato?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi. Do you have any insight on to, like, what might happen this summer if Dockside is not available for the Film Society?
I think we could accommodate at Mayor's Park. There is electricity at the pavilion, so it may be more towards, towards that end. And, and that was a possibility. I know the, the Phillips Town Recreation, they've done movies at, at their parks as well, so that might be an option to do it on, at the Phillips Town Park on, on 9D.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do you have any insight into, like, the bandstand and tree lighting? Would, would the weekend of December 9th, I guess Saturday is the day that that usually happens, would, would that be a day that would work for the rec department?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine. Yeah, that's fine.
And also, the fire company in terms of Santa Claus?
I'll coordinate, but yeah, well, yeah, we should have enough time to, to coordinate that, but, but that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Again, we're not, we're not making any decisions on dates this evening. We're not making any votes on dates. We're just putting it out there so we can start the discussion to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's in line with where it was this year, this past year, so I think that, that's probably the weekend we would have chosen anyway.
Okay, great. That's great.
I think that's all I have for the, the events calendar sort of plan.
I do have a couple, I do have a couple of possible events at, at Mayor's Park. There's a, there's a Putnam County Wine and Food Festival that none of the, none of these applications have been approved yet. They've just been submitted, or drafts have been submitted at this point, but the dates, the tentative dates we have for that would be August 6th and 7th. And then for the Hops on the Hudson, there's tentative date of July 2nd or July 16th.
Okay, that's very helpful. I think we should definitely put any events that are in public spaces that, that do get approved on the calendar, so that it's just clear what, when it's booked and, like, spaces are booked and when they aren't.
Absolutely.
That's good to get on the radar. Thank you.
I was going to suggest the Hops on the Hudson maybe stay away from the 2nd, only because of any Fourth of July celebrations, fireworks, or, or things like that. They seem to be open to both dates, so as long as the 16th of July doesn't conflict with any other dates, events, then that might be a better, a better date.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's anything else on that date, so I, I agree. That seems like a better choice.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's all I have at this time.
Just one question for Jeff. Jeff, were those two events under the new rec agreement paperwork and fee structures?
Yeah, they were. Yeah, so there was a draft sent out to both of them. They've had events in the past, so, and they were asking about events already, so they did go over the, the drafts. I watermarked it as draft. I let them know. But yeah, that was based on the, the new fee structures and the new criteria.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eliza, Mark Forlo here, a board chair of the Putnam History Museum. The, the email was forwarded to me with the attachment, and it was suggested that I, I attend this meeting. We're very interested, of course, in, in partnering with any number of these events. I would, I would want to introduce our executive director, Cassie Ward, to, to you, or, or a designated point person. But there is, you know, a lot we can bring to the table, and we also have a partnership, a close relationship with Scenic Hudson, who, you know, operates the West Point Foundry Preserve. So there's, there's, there's many things that we could, we could do to tie in with these various events during the course of the year. We have participated with, in them in the past. We got a Parrot Rifle on, on a trailer, which was, you know, driven down the Fourth of July Parade with the men in Civil, Civil War uniforms to celebrate the 200th anniversary of the Foundry back in 2018. We also had a tent down by the, by the water with some of our historical assets on display. You know, and, and of course, we have, we have a very nice property, you know, just, just off of Chestnut Street, right near where Joe, Joe lives, and we, you know, we could open that up on, you know, to on certain days for certain events, and have, you know, possibly have something of our own there to, to enhance the celebration, so to speak. So there, there is lots that can be done. But I, I defer to Cassie to comment on how much she can actually handle, because it's a small staff, staff of three. And then, in closing, I just want to ask the group, how many people have been to the Putnam History Museum in the last five years? Okay, I see some hands. How many people are members? Okay, we, you should all think about joining, no pressure, but it is, the, the museum has had, in spite of COVID, a couple of really great years in a row, and we're, we've got a lot planned for 2022. We, we are all about community. And, and, you know, we try to bring the content and the programming that's really relevant to Putnam County, and you know, because we live on the sexy side of the county, right on the Hudson River, where all the Revolutionary War events took place. You know, quite a bit of it is about, you know, Phillips Town Garrison, Cold Spring. So, you know, we've got a lot to share with the community, and we, and we, we really would love to, to partner with you, you folks on what, whatever it is you, you, whatever is done for these, for these various, various events, parades, et cetera.
That's, that's appreciated, and I'll touch base and reach out to Cassie and see if I can meet with her to see if she wants to partner on any specific parade or event. That would, that would be really great. I'm glad to hear that there's interest.
Right. Yeah, I wasn't trying to guilt, guilt you folks. I know you've got busy lives, you know, but, but I'd really, I'd really love to see you, see you in our museum and checking out our, our content-rich social media that we, we circulate. There's a lot of great stuff about our community. It's, it's really rich in history, and I hope you, you, you think about joining us.
Okay. Well, I think we've got to get back to our agenda, but thank you for that, and, and I hope everyone will check out the museum, because we all love it.
Sorry for the, sorry for the plug.
Okay, so that will move on to our other business. We have a presentation from Jeff Mickelson, New York Health Act presentation. I don't see, see. Jeff was on. Right here, right in my face.
I'm here. Hey, how's it going?
Good, good. So thank you for taking the time to give us this short presentation on, on the New York Healthcare Act and pass it on to you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time. I've got about 10 minutes, if that's okay, and then if any, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or at a later point. So some of you know me through my role as advocacy chair of the chamber, which is why I'm usually on these meetings, but tonight, I'm here as a resident of Cold Spring and as somebody like every other human being who needs healthcare. And like far too many Americans, I know what it's like to go for years without health insurance. Delaying care, praying I don't get sick or injured. Luckily for me, I didn't during that stage of my life. But I also know what it's like to watch a parent spend the last years of her life battling with insurance companies. But I also know what it's like to watch a parent spend the last years of her life battling with insurance companies. And even though my mom had so-called good insurance, that was the case. Even if you or the people in your life have never experienced something like this, I would imagine that you have some sense that there's something deeply wrong with our healthcare system in this country. So I'm here tonight to ask the village of Cold Spring to pass a resolution in support of a bill that I believe would go a long way toward fixing this problem. As two or 22 other municipalities around the state of New York, from New York City to Buffalo, including Phillips Town and several others in the Hudson Valley have already done. And while I'm not here representing the chamber tonight, I am happy to announce that last week, the five members of the advocacy committee and the 10 members of the chamber board voted unanimously to support this resolution. And the bill it advocates, which is called the New York Health Act. So before I go into what the bill is and what it does, I just want to say a few words about our current system. And my apologies to some of you might have heard some version of this presentation before. Unfortunately, the situation hasn't improved. In fact, it gets worse every year. But thankfully, the solution to it is is equally clear. And, you know, in that context, it's important to remember that our current healthcare system has been in a state of crisis since long before this pandemic began. In 2019, approximately 1 million New Yorkers had no health insurance at all. It's about that amount now. And millions more were uninsured, which meant, which means they had insurance, but they were unable to use it because of high deductibles, copays, and so on. In fact, a statewide survey released in 2018 revealed that 50% of New Yorkers had skipped or delayed treatment due to cost. 75% had been uninsured at some point in their lives. And one in three reported developing more serious conditions because they had delayed care. Nationwide, in a quote-unquote "normal" year, about 68,000 people die in this country due to lack of medical coverage. And medical bills are the number one cause of bankruptcy. Both of these things, actually, all of those things are unheard of in the rest of the industrialized world. So despite these gaping holes in our healthcare system, we pay twice as much as any major country in the world. And we get much worse results. We have higher infant and maternal mortality rates, a lower life expectancy, and we rank near the bottom of wealthy countries in terms of overall health and access to care. The racial disparities in our healthcare system compound this problem. For example, a black woman in the United States is three times as likely to die in childbirth as a white woman. The pandemic, of course, has only made this picture worse. Tens of thousands of New Yorkers got sick and died disproportionately in communities of color and in economically disadvantaged areas, in part because we don't have a coherent public healthcare system. Hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers lost their jobs or their businesses and with it their health insurance at the worst possible time. And doctors and nurses were forced to work with inadequate resources and in many cases cases without basic protective equipment. And they're still strained to the point of exhaustion due to chronic understaffing in our hospitals. And I don't have to tell this board what a burden healthcare costs and maintaining a healthy workforce can be for municipalities. And that was true, it's true now during the pandemic, but that was true before the pandemic as well. So thankfully, there is an alternative. The New York Health Act is a bill before the New York State Legislature that would provide guaranteed comprehensive healthcare to every resident and full-time worker in the state of New York, regardless of age, income, employment status, or ability to pay, with no premiums, copays, or deductibles. It would cover all medically necessary services, including primary and specialty and preventative care, mental and reproductive health, dental, vision, hearing, prescription drugs, and long-term care. There are no network restrictions. So you can choose the doctor and the hospital that you want and get the treatment when you need it, not when you can afford it. It's very simple. If you get sick, you go to the hospital, you get treated, and the state of New York pays the bill with no out-of-pocket costs. This program would be financed through a combination of funds that New York currently receives from the federal government for programs like Medicare and Medicaid, plus a progressively graduated tax on income from employment and investments. The first $25,000 of income would be entirely exempt from the tax. And for seniors, it's the first $50,000 of income. The remaining tax brackets would be steeply progressive, with New York's highest earners paying by far the most. Employers would be required to pay at least 80% of the payroll tax for their employees. If you're self-employed like I am, then you would pay that entire amount. This progressive dedicated revenue would replace the deeply regressive tax that we currently pay in the form of premiums, copays, and deductibles. So despite the dramatic expansion in coverage for New Yorkers under the New York Health Act, multiple studies have shown that adopting it would actually save money and a ton of it. In 2018, an exhaustive study commissioned by the New York State Health Foundation and conducted by the Rand Corporation concluded that between 90 and 98% of New Yorkers would pay less than they do now for healthcare. Local governments and school systems would save millions every year. And the state would save billions overall, thanks to the elimination of administrative waste, increased efficiency, and the ability to bargain for better prices with pharmaceutical companies. So the draft resolution that I've submitted, and I can put a link in the chat to it later if you like, I think it was part of the public record that we submitted, estimates what the likely savings would be just for the village of Cold Spring and for the Haldane system. And we need to wait on some final numbers from you guys before we can make those numbers concrete. But by my estimate, by best estimate, the savings for the village of Cold Spring would be in the ballpark of $280,000 per year on healthcare costs. And for the Haldane School System, the savings would be $1.6 million per year. Now, I didn't include this in my draft resolution, but when Phillips Town passed their similar resolution in 2020, it estimated that the bill would save the town about $800,000 per year. And it would save the county a whopping $21 million. Those are savings that could be passed on to all of us taxpayers in the form of lower property taxes and/or in the form of improved public services. It's a lot of money, as you guys know, on every level of government. So those of you who are familiar with the bill know that this isn't just some crazy pie-in-the-sky idea that could never happen. In fact, this is how most of the rest of the world does healthcare, including our neighbor directly to the North Canada. And I would love to have you ask any Canadian or any European or any from anyone from Taiwan or any of the countless other countries in the world who do their healthcare like the New York Health Act, if they would trade their system for ours, the answer will be no, I can guarantee it. The New York Health Act itself, though, does have a long history. It's been around for 30 years exactly. In fact, my former Assemblyman Dick Godfrey introduced it then and has been introducing it every year as the Chair of the Assembly Health Committee. He's still the lead sponsor, although he's retiring this year, so we want to get it done before that happens. And in fact, Dick joined one of our chamber breakfast meetings last year to answer questions about the bill. And there's a recording of that online in case anybody wants to take a look. This bill has been scored and vetted by independent agencies. It's been through multiple rounds of amendments, and it's received public hearings all across the state, most recently in 2019, and there was one right here in Kingston. So in recent years, the New York Health Act has actually picked up a lot of steam. It's passed the Assembly four times already. And last year, it was introduced for the first time with majority support in both the Assembly and the Senate. And that's, that those aren't just people who say they'll vote for it. Those are people who are cosponsors. And that includes our Assemblywoman Sandy Galiff and a lot of other legislators here in the Hudson Valley for complicated reasons. And unfortunately, the bill didn't come up for a vote in 2021, but we have an excellent chance of passing it this year. Every time a municipality like Cold Spring passes a resolution, like the one I'm asking you to consider, it makes that outcome more likely. Lawmakers do pay attention. And even though this is state legislation, it would have a profound positive impact on the financial health of the village of Cold Spring and on the health and the well-being of its residents. We here in New York and Cold Spring have healthcare to this entire country. So I'm glad that the Cold Spring to pass this resolution in support of the New York Health Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes.
Does anyone have questions for Jeff on this? I've seen the presentation, the full presentation with Dick Godfrey several times, so I'm pretty well versed on it.
So I mean, I have a couple of questions. I don't disagree at all with any of the premises and the whole health insurance world. I agree with you 1,000%. It is a mess. At this point, I'm not sure that this is the solution. I would definitely like to take a look at it. It's pretty complicated. It's a complete revamping of the New York state economy and the tax code for the most part. But I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just think it's something that we need to digest a little bit. I know our treasurer was going to take a look at a bunch of those numbers and come up with, you know, her opinion on it based on, you know, what she knows. Where is this bill as it relates to, let's say, Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins, who I guess controls a lot of this machinery, if you want to call it that?
That she does. So especially in the Senate, the Majority Leader Stuart Cousins has a lot of control over the caucus. And enough, no bill moves forward without without her say-so. So she generally, especially on big bills, takes a neutral stance until the caucus is ready to move on it. So she hasn't taken a position on this bill. As I mentioned earlier, the vast majority of her caucus has, almost every member of it has co-sponsored the bill at this point. I've met with her personally on the bill. She supports it in a, in a lot of, I mean, she hasn't said she'll co-sponsor it yet. But she realizes like everyone else that our current system is completely dysfunctional. You know, the the Senate, especially between the two houses, likes to work on the basis of consensus. And even though they have majorities now and like the vast majority of their caucus, they want to, you know, bring as many on board as possible before it moves forward. So she's taking a cautious stance, you know, for us in the activism world around this issue, too cautious, too cautious a position. But, you know, ultimately, it's the pressure that builds from below that determines what the leaders of either houses do in 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 our state government. And if enough of the state legislature, legislators, legislators put enough pressure on the leadership, they will move forward with the bill. And like I said earlier, we have a very good chance of that happening this year. It's the second year in a two-year election cycle. Last year, we passed the huge milestone of getting majorities in both houses. They, the Senate in particular, right now, has formed working groups. It's behind closed doors. It's not a public process. But this is often a last stage before a big complicated bill gets passed. They were, they form these working groups to work out some of the final details. One thing that, you know, I think for people who are cautious about it and, you know, it's like, hey, you know, it's a big deal, which you're right. I don't deny it. It's like, it's a huge deal. I mean, our current healthcare system is about one-sixth of our economy, and we're going to be not changing all of it because doctors and hospitals will still be private, but we're going to change the way it's paid for, and that is a big deal. But built into the bill itself is a fairly lengthy process to figure out how to implement it. So if, you know, if we pass it this year, the the following year, the governor would be required to submit a budget, finalizing those numbers for paying for the program. And the program itself wouldn't be implemented until at the earliest the year after that. So we're talking about a two, more likely three-year window, during which a commission will be formed with stakeholders from around the state. There'll be regional councils and every stakeholder that you can imagine will be part of that process to make sure it's done right. And there'll be no rush in the process. It's, there's a lot written into the bill at this point, but because our healthcare system is so complicated, there are details that are, that will have to be filled in once the bill is passed. Really, at this point, it's about a statement of principle that the current system is not working. It's killing people. It's bankrupting people. We need to change it in a, in a, in a big way. And we need to start that process now because every year we don't is another year people die and people don't get treated when they need it and they go bankrupt.
And this may not be known yet, but who is the lead agency that would actually implement this? Is this, obviously, it's New York State. Is it an existing department? Is it a brand new?
It would create, you know, as you can imagine, it's a fairly, you know, a bureaucracy of its own, although compared to the complicated and extremely expensive bureaucracy of our insurance system, it's minimal. But it would, it would create a commission, first of all, to determine how the the program and the plan is implemented and maintained over time, which, as I mentioned earlier, will have regional councils as part of its decision-making process. It forms a trust fund for funding the program, and the trustees of that trust fund are composed of appointees by the governor, by the state legislature, and by regions within the state. So there's, it's a pretty maximally democratic process to administer the program itself. The governor will have a fair amount of control over that, but but not total control. And the state legislator and even, you know, as I said, local governments and and regions will have a lot of say in that process as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jeff. That's really, it's very interesting and it's a lot of information to take in. This is the first time I'm I'm here. I've heard about it. I haven't seen the presentation in full, so that was very helpful. And we will digest the information that you've given us and and talk about it and figure out what the next steps will be.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes. And if you have questions, we will definitely bombard you with them.
Yep. Bring them on.
Jeff, and also I recommend anybody who wants to know more to check out the video presentation with Dick Godfrey that the chamber held, because he answered a lot of the general questions and concerns that people had that come up repeatedly in that presentation. So it's very informative.
That's right. Maybe we can up on, on the website.
Yeah. I can board it.
Yeah, great. Okay. Well, thank you. Now we're going to do a garbage update. We like garbage. We talk about it every week. Joe, you give us an update on the garbage?
Sure. So as you stated, we've been updating the public and the board every week on the garbage situation. The premise is basically that the village would subcontract out the garbage and recycling to a low bidder, which was Royal Karting, that was done by the prior board. We're continuing those conversations. Royal has confirmed that they will be at the board meeting next Wednesday at 7 o'clock. So Jim Constantino, who pretty much runs Royal, will be there to present. And he's going to go through a whole presentation on the history of his company, the history of that company as it relates to municipalities. And they do Nelsonville, they do Fishkill, they do Beacon, and they do a bunch of others in the area. He'll also talk about what that means as far as garbage bins. Each each tax parcel would be entitled to one of three choices on the garbage bins, either a 95-gallon, a 65-gallon, or a 35-gallon. They would have that choice. And then one recycling bin, which would be either a 65 or a 35 gallon. So he'll walk through that whole process. The pickup schedule would be the same as it currently is. There might be a shift in days, but for all intensive purposes, it'll still be a one, one garbage, one recycling per week. We will also include Main Street. It will also include the public parks. So pretty much what's being picked up now by the village would be picked up by Royal. So he's going to walk everybody through that. He will also walk us through the process, if in fact it does get approved, of how it will actually happen. I received an email from him today. The lead time on bins, because they're, they're made, is about six weeks, and then it's about a two-week distribution. and then it's about a two-week distribution process, and they would actually deliver those to each parcel. So you wouldn't have to go pick them up. He would also set up a recycling bin at the Village Highway where people could actually take their old garbage cans, metal, plastic, whatever, and they would recycle those as well. So he's going to talk about that. He's also going to talk about the recycling process of how that works once it leaves people's property. So whether the village is picking it up or whether Royal's picking it up, there is a process that happens as it leaves your house. He's going to talk a little bit about how that works. That was a question that someone had asked, and I think Eliza, you had asked that question as well. And then he's up for questions. So whatever questions anyone has as it relates to it, you know, we'll open up the questions. I spoke to Kathleen about that right after their presentation, so you don't have to wait till the end. And it's fully transparent. I mean, they've done this many times. They've been doing our garbage the last few weeks as we've had issues with either trucks, personnel, or many other things. So they're familiar with the route, they're familiar with the community. They've been working with the village for about two years on this, so I didn't realize it went back that long. And, you know, so they're pretty familiar with how things work at Cold Spring. Once that process is finished at the meeting, then Michelle, our treasurer, is going to go through the economics of it, how it relates to what we currently spend on garbage. You're going to see the spread between what we currently spend and what it would cost Royal is not a significant amount of money. And where we really pick up as a village is what the highway department now can actually get done around the village. So currently, about 50% of their time is spent doing garbage and recycling. Their other 50% is supposed to be doing sidewalks, repairs, asphalt, catch basins, storm drains, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to invite Bugsy, who's the highway crew chief, to the meeting, and he's going to talk about at least some of the projects that he's already got lined up, if in fact he gets garbage off his back. We spoke last Friday at length about it. And there's a lot of stuff that really could get done around here that doesn't, that I think is something that we just need to do. And if we can get the garbage off our back, and it's not a burden on anyone financially or a burden on the service, I think there's a lot of things that the village will benefit from this. I've lived here for 25 years. I didn't move here because my garbage got picked up by the village. I moved here because of the pristine nature of the village and the fact that I can walk down the street and not trip. I don't fall into potholes. There's a pothole right now in front of my house that you could rent out. It's that big. But I think we can also then also start having conversations about repositioning of what we want the highway department to be. We have infrastructure, we have buildings, we own $15 million worth of assets. I think this gives us a fresh start to really take a look at how we manage, maintain, and upkeep our infrastructure, and this is all part of it. And getting garbage off the table is just a small piece. It's a low-lying fruit of a really big conversation that I think we should have. So in that regard, you know, let's hear what they have to say in public. You'll see the numbers next week. We'll have it all posted ahead of time. We went ahead and posted the full Royal bid on the website, and it's in the agenda tonight. So the board discussed these bids back on November 23rd. They went through the numbers, they went through the other bids. What we posted just now is the actual full bid document, which is 75 pages, that pretty much gives you all the meat and potatoes of what they're actually bidding on. I would suggest if people really are interested, go back to the November 23rd YouTube video. Dave does about nine and a half minutes presentation of why they proceeded with the bid, tweets you were on the board at that point. It's pretty informative. So that's something I think if you just don't want to hear it necessarily from me or this board, you'll hear it from someone else who's kind of, who we're repeating exactly what was said at that point. It makes a lot of sense for the village. And outside of that, that's kind of an update. We received about an hour ago, a contract from Royal based on all the conversations. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but we will. That'll go to our attorney for a review. There's no surprises in the contract from what I understand based on what the bids were. And, you know, we'll proceed. So on the February 2nd, everybody can ask what questions they want. We want the board comfortable, we want the public comfortable. And, you know, we'll take it from there. I personally think it's a good thing, and I think it just opens up opportunities for the village and conversations that we need to have, that we sometimes don't have because we get distracted with things. The garbage cloud that hangs over the village on a daily basis is significant. And if it's not because the truck is breaking, it's because of the staff being out. You know, it's an underserved department. We just need to really deal with this issue in an intelligent fashion, and I think this is one way to do it. So that's kind of an update.
That's a good update. Thank you. So yeah, so we hope that people will join us next Wednesday for the presentation, and they are also dropping off the two carts.
They're going to drop them off this week, so there'll actually be the physical carts at Village Hall. I'll take pictures, I'll take dimensions of it, we'll get that out and post it all around. Eliza, you could do some social media stuff. The easiest way to look is if you've driven through Nelsonville. Nelsonville, almost everyone has a 95-gallon refuse container and a 65-gallon recycling container. Royal recommends those because those are the biggest and it holds the most. And a 95-gallon garbage can holds a lot of stuff. So we'll see. I think from a service standpoint, you're going to put your stuff out at night, you're going to come back in the morning, you're going to pick up your newspaper maybe, you're going to bring your can in, you're not going to know the difference of anything. You'll probably guess a few less email alerts saying that garbage is not getting picked up today. And then we can start having conversations of real big issues that I think are things that we need to have.
Thank you, Joe. All right. So with that, I'll just give a little quick update. So that's the February 2nd meeting. Then on February 9th, we're going to do our normal business monthly meeting. February 16th, we are having a presentation from DEC on Doc's side, and we will get more information to you about that as soon as we have that. But that will be a great update and helpful for our planning of events, Doc's side. And February 23rd is an Altice Public Hearing. So the next agenda item is approval of the bills. I'd like to make them to approve bills number 633 in the amount of $95,120. Can I?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the bills have passed, and now we will open it up to public discussion. If anyone has any comments, please raise your hand.
Doesn't look like anybody has anything to say.
Question. Unfortunately, I have another meeting next week, so I can't attend the Royal Karting thing. But I just had a question about, I saw in the bid that they're including the yard waste pickup as part of the bid. Is there, is there an opportunity to increase the number of days that they pick up or increase the amount of service we've been getting recently? I obviously live in the village, as we all do, and, you know, I think during the winter, during the summer, while there might be fewer leaves and things, the lawn clippings really start to pile up, and there's no elegant way of storing them for a month at a time, particularly because, you know, we aren't putting it in plastic bags anymore, which is great. But so that's just the one area of concern that I'm, I have a question about, and I don't know whether this might be an opportunity to set up a system where people could drop those off somewhere in the village. I don't know where Royal is going to be bringing the yard waste, but if there's a location at, you know, either of the highway departments, or if we can make some sort of arrangement with Glenwood or another conservation area where, you know, lawn waste can be disposed of, that would be great.
So they bid on basically what the board had put in the bid documents, which was 12 visits. So they bid on what the board asked them to do, which was back in November. My guess is any deviation from that would just be a function of money. It would be a question that we could ask them and just say, what kind of money do you want to deviate from? That wouldn't be an unreasonable request to just find out what that number would be.
And would that be, sorry, is that also just like what we do now, like just putting it out in bags as much or as little as you have in paper bags? There's not some receptacle or something that they're going to be giving us?
No, it's not a receptacle. It's pretty much, I think, what's currently happening, and the way the bid is specified is paper leaf bags, metal, plastic containers, small branches bundled, curbside. It would be a question, I guess, for Bugsy as to what alternatives to that could be. He'll be here next week in public, but I will, when I speak to him, ask him just to give some insight into that whole concept. I don't know exactly what they do with it, to be perfectly honest with you. I haven't got that far into the garbage world yet, but I'll ask him. It's a legitimate question, and we'll come up with an answer.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? No?
That looks like it.
I had a comment, actually. I know you, Jeff Amato, sorry. Just a comment about Sea Street. I know you said to table it until we have a proposal in hand. Just a couple of comments, though, or maybe suggestions to, one, to poll residents possibly to see how they feel about it. I mean, I understand you're opening the meetings to them, but possibly polling them, you know, via email, I don't know, having something available online where they could fill out and respond, I think would be a great, even polling, even polling businesses, to be honest with you, because I've spoken to several businesses, restaurants, where they felt that the number of people in the village, when the boats are coming in, are actually a hindrance. They're actually not, you know, not great for business. In some sense, they're not, the people are buying things because they're traveling back on boat. You know, sometimes they're spending a long amount of time in the restaurants because they want to stay warm, they've done what they need to, and they're just, they wanted a place to sit and drink. So, and the lines at some of the restaurants and shops are just, they can be very long. So I know the, you know, the benefits of having the additional income for when the boats do come in, but it does put a big strain on the community, I think. And I think that this board realizes it, which is why, you know, you're obviously looking into it, but I just feel that it'd be good to get some residents' input. I know it definitely benefits in ways, but maybe reducing the number of boats, especially on peak days, you know, peak leaf season, because I think it's been said before, but we can't really control the number of people that come here on the train. We can't really control the number of people that drive here. But we can control the number of people via boats. And when you have multiple modes of transportation, now that, you know, hopefully, the next year will be beyond COVID. I think this year even, we've seen a lot more people take the train, be willing to take the boats. But there's still a lot of people that drive here, and just both the amount of vehicle and foot traffic in the village really puts a strain, especially during the fall on the village itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I think it's not a terrible idea to do a community survey of some sort. And I know the chamber has been talking to the merchants and sort of taking a general feeling for it. But those are all going to be things, that kind of input will be what we take into consideration. And I think that the value of going out to them first is to know what we have to gain. I think in the past, the village has, you know, allowed Sea Street to come because it was a value in terms of revenue, and it really made a big difference with the budget. So I think we need to see if that is still a possibility, or if it's something worth considering, and then getting a sense from the villagers might be something we could do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Well, then I will make a motion to close the meeting unless either Trustee Curdo or Starbuck, you have anything else to add?
I don't. I'll second your motion.
Am I frozen? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.